Okay, call the regular meeting of council, uh, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to order, please, seven o'clock. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to move the, uh, agenda approved with the following amendment to remove item, uh, item eleven B, the Iben pump contest. I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you.
We can just tell you the reason we were thinking that this was done in September and it wasn't, uh, it doesn't finish until October.
The Iben pump contest is still ongoing, so there's not much sense calling the winner right now. Wouldn't be very fair. Okay, can I get a motion to adopt the minutes, please?
I move to adopt the minutes at the September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting of council.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, errors, omissions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you. Uh, item four, public input inquiries. Any public input tonight? Going once? Oh, yes.
Certainly. I just walked along with Eddie. I think you might have met before, uh, needless to say. And my mother's honored in that beautiful monument outside there for her service in Warren. Uh, I just want to introduce myself. I'm one of the candidates running for councillor at large, Diane Meehan. It's a pleasure to meet you. I have my business card if anyone would like to check my website. I can pass some for you. And if anybody has any questions, Mr. Casey?
Nice to meet you.
Yes, I mentioned, we're here for the same reason, but we have other guests as well.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any disclosures, council? No disclosures, our reports. Chief Cus, you're up.
New name, uh, mayor, council, public. Uh, September, I always have to point it when the calls, quite a few of those were, uh, with, um, Hurricane Lee, power lines down and such, so they kept us, uh, going. Had one structure fire and that, and always a few motor vehicle accidents. People still learn to drive. Also, this is this year so far up to the day, it's three hundred and fifteen incidents, us training, truck checks, whatever, calls, which comes to, uh, six thousand eight hundred ninety-five point eight hours, wow, man hours so far. We have trucks NBI'd. Our, uh, pumper, um, two out of, uh, station two, uh, frames bad on it, rusted. Failed inspection.
Ooh, never good.
I got a quote out, I got one quote, I'm waiting for one more from Metal Fab. And, uh, I'll go from there.
Can they fix something like that, or has to be everybody, oh, they can. Excellent.
Actually, Excel painting, come right to the where it's being inspected, looked it all over and give us a price, fix around ten thousand dollars to, uh, fix it.
Okay, that's the same group we had fix our, uh, our dump trailer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so then they did a good job, yeah.
I guess it's quite common, uh, with cement trucks and stuff. They do a lot of them, the way you, uh, he was telling me.
Okay.
That, uh, frame rotted off.
Is that that pumper that's about twenty-ish years old, or?
It is twenty. Uh, actually, we do bring it up a couple of months ago about replacing it. And I'm just waiting on, uh, uh, the quote for that as well. I hate to say it, but it's probably around seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah, there shouldn't be no cheese. But you gotta have a pumper, something as simple as that.
And the four by four, uh, was took it in. The box is rotted off, but pretty well, across members, he said two to three thousand. But the fenders, if you look at the size, would be getting another year out of it. So, to tell you the truth, what I'm looking for right now is, uh, a service body. Seeing all my K D Power have them, uh, all the service providers that work on equipment, so.
Okay.
So, you just let the body off, set that on, and, uh, apartment's on the outside and and last time I checked, about ten thousand dollars, but I'm looking for used though. See what I come up with, keep her on the road.
All important.
That's great, that's great. It's great because, well, we haul our four-inch pump and that, plus a whole bunch of supplies. It's good for quick response, too, for, uh, medical assistance or anything like that as well. Any questions?
Would it not be worth looking at new one, or the new one, rather than the used? Will the rest of it, if you bought something new, will it not extend it longer?
Well, the truck is.
It's two thousand and twelve?
Is it that now?
I can't remember now.
I, I was thinking seven or nine.
We bought it used.
Yeah.
So.
I guess you'll.
The body, though, like you said, Susan, the body can be transferred anyway. As long as you bought the same little base truck.
Okay.
You could all switch bodies.
Yeah, like you're not gonna save much money, I don't think, buying that used, if it's only ten thousand new. If you get it for like six, you're better off just getting used, you're better off to buy the new one and then transfer it to a new body, we get another vehicle.
That's something to look at, yeah.
I mean, it's a, you know, check all your options.
Yeah.
I'll check, but, uh, oh, um, options. Now. No, that's right, they may have something, um, one of the firefighters, he follows the federal options, and I guess they usually have one on that side as well.
Chief Cus, we should do that sooner than later so that I have some budget figures.
Yes, yes, no, no, I'm working on trying to get prices, trying to find one and get prices for it. Uh, same as that frame, just waiting for, uh, Metal Fab. They were down, looked at it. He said he'd have it here last week, but when I called him yesterday, it was, he never got back from me. But when I was talking to him, I was talking to Gordon Green, owner, and, uh, he was telling me it's his fault, but I had a look at it, and I told him upfront, like I had a quote already. He asked where, and I told him Excel painting. It's good to know, he says, because he says, I think I'll start sending all of our stock, that, that because they're so busy, people come into the same problem, say, what does seven do then? So.
I'm nervous.
Oh, yeah.
Excel painting, sure does.
Is it? Yeah, so, there you go. Yeah, it does. So I don't expect, I don't expect the price of Metal Fab to be any less anything probably more.
And they'll send it out to them anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
I suppose it's not a business of everybody. So, makes sense.
Very good.
No more questions? Great. Can I get a motion to receive the fire report, please?
Motion received fire report. I'll second.
Questions concerned, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, chief.
No problem, I put anything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Presentations, we don't have any tonight. Error permits?
There's no eight.
Right? Yeah, there's an interesting one in there that looked like there was another, uh, structure being added by ten by twenty for another two million dollars. That two million dollar permit covers, there's one permit covers both.
Yeah.
Covers the new structure and the ten by twenty addition.
It is nice to see realistic fees finally, though, in our permits.
Oh, yeah, makes, makes a difference.
A difference, yeah.
That's, uh, you know, when you look at what we're collecting for some of them, it's quite a, quite a bit of cash.
Case for the upgrade, the fire, the fire department.
There. Uh, no propretations, petitions and delegations, we don't have any, and item eleven is, uh, business arising, eleven A, bylaw thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Do I need a motion now?
Which one do you explain?
Okay, which one is this?
Okay, so, this is the application for the, um, wellness center.
Right.
Um, we did a public hearing last month, and there wasn't any objections to it. So it's for Dr. Travis Wallace and Dr. Marissa Lane, and all of your approval letters and everything are in your package. So the only thing that we have to do is the three readings for our bylaw to amend the rural plan. So tonight we will do first and second reading, and then we will put this on our website. And then in November, we'll do the third reading and enactment for it.
Excellent.
Okay, so I move that bylaw number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to amend the rural community of Hanwell rural plan beginning its first reading by title.
I'll second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bylaw number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to amend the rural community of Hanwell rural plan.
So then I just need the second reading.
Second reading, same thing.
Want me to read this one?
Sure.
Uh, I moved a bylaw number thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to amend the rural community of Hanwell rural plan, beginning the second reading by title.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you.
Maybe we'll just read the title.
Yeah, bylaw thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to amend the rural community of Hanwell rural plan.
Okay, item B is postponed. Iben pump contest, World Diabetes Day. It's November fourteenth, everybody, I'll just read that over for the record. World Bot Diabetes Day is November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the theme this year is empowering global health. It serves as a beacon of hope. It reminds us that by coming together, by understanding, caring, and acting, we can create a world where diabetes does not dictate our lives. So on this World Diabetes Day, let's unite. So many of our communities, communities suffer from diabetes, and it's important to know your risk of developing type two diabetes and having the ability to access information. Take this time to schedule chapters up and have regular screenings that prevent, help prevent late diagnosis and increases the chance of right treatment. On November fourteenth, we encourage everybody to wear blue in support of our fellow community members, friends, and family. For more information, contact the Diabetes Education Center at five zero six four five two five one eight zero. The clinic services are free and self-referred, and are located in the lobby of the Frederick Medical Building on ten fifteen Regent Street.
So we've been asked by a resident, um, if we would shine a blue light on our building on November fourteenth. So we're trying, we don't have a rental, um, that evening or whatever, so we'll try to get the light and shine. I know we had talked about it for, I believe it was Cancer Day, the pink or something, but we had a rental that evening, so we weren't able to do that, so we will try to, um, get a blue light and do that in support of the world by diabetes.
Council Fox.
Thank you. Um, I'm just wondering, so with that, because of the rental, like, I'm wondering even just, you know, as you walk in and it's just the wall there, is there a way, like, maybe we could use that and just shine something on there, like, we just need a little spotlight and just shine on there, and that way, even if we have rentals, it wouldn't bother anybody, and you can still see it from the road, like, it just might be a way to, to be able to do more of these things and show our support.
Yeah, definitely a good one.
I said, before you mentioned that, I was thinking, um, what if on special occasions, we were, we hope to get a light to shine onto our veterans memorial, where it's nice and reflects light very nicely.
Like the light inside of it?
Well, no, or just have the light shining. Shine on it, yeah.
Yeah, just put a, like I said, a blue cutter floodlight on it.
Yeah, and then do a pink or whatever.
Whatever color happens to be like.
We can just have that as our, okay, because it's nice and visible, and I think it would.
Certainly check to see what it looks like.
Well, yeah.
If it takes away from, from it, I shouldn't don't want to.
It shouldn't for a day, like.
If anything, might enhance it, cause it would attract attention to it.
Of course, we can look at, go some night and have a look at the darks.
Absolutely.
For the ball.
Or we could even shine it on the little recreation building.
Yes, we could do that, too.
Right, it's right there, it's white. We could shine it there.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll see that from the road.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, too.
Something we'll get staff to review and come up with, whatever seems appropriate.
Yeah, good ideas.
Okay, item twelve, correspondence. We have a letter to DTI and Minister Richard Ames, uh, safety issue on Deerwood. Uh, another, uh, an urgent safety issue on Deerwood Drive, road erosion, and an email from resident concerned with vegetation on Minzy's Road.
So these ones are just, we don't really need to accept them because they were from us. And the email from the resident, she had just copied us, she had written to DTI herself. However, I do want to give you an update on the road erosion. After I wrote this letter to the minister, they called me back that afternoon and said that they were aware of the situation because I had contacted them during Hurricane Lee. Um, but they said that it will be fixed before winter, and the culvert will be done in the spring. The culvert replacement, so.
Council Bridle.
Can I speak briefly on the Deerwood Drive issue?
Sure.
I use it every time I come over here, so I'm well familiar with it, and the residents of Deerwood Drive have a very valid concern about speed and no question about it. Uh, but I just want to put a little bit of context on that. Uh, Deerwood Drive, uh, if we're thinking forward for this community to bring it together and be more cohesive, Deerwood Drive really is a main connector, uh, for Ward Five with the six forty and everything that goes behind there. So I think we have to keep that in mind going forward, that Deerwood Drive is, as much as maybe the residents out there may not like that, it's a reality, and if we're gonna bring the community together, there's gonna be even more traffic on, on Deerwood Drive, so, um, I think we have to respect their quality of life, no question about it, but I think we also have to recognize that Deerwood Drive, it is, it's just as important to the people of Ward Five as the Mazaron Settlement Road is for a lot of people in Ward Six. So I just want to put that context out there, and something we should be thinking of in the future, it's, it's gonna be more of a connector road, so.
Well, if you're, if you're certainly going up river on the rural highway, if anybody can, goes through the that way, or goes through the Mazaron, but Deerwood's very busy.
Yeah, it probably will get busy.
Well, this classifies Class B, right? It classifies as a throughway, so. Discretes road stuff, negative evaluation, so if you're not familiar, so Class C roads would basically be like, um, subdivisions residential and so forth. Class B would be major throughway that has less than ten thousand cars, or a thousand cars, um, a day, and then you end in the Class A roads, like six forty and, and the freeway and stuff like that, that are Class A one, Class A two. So B is, um, kinda like the next level up. It's now reconsidered a subdivision road, even though it goes through a subdivision. Um, so just something to be aware of, because that may come up in the future. We're investigating, uh, some stuff with the permanent transportation infrastructure that we're potentially taking over some of that, so maintenance would be a little higher on that, because you have, there's certain different levels of grading and stuff like that that has to be done. Thankfully, they actually just regraded it a few years ago and re-leveled it, so might not be maintenance for a while, but it's just something to be aware of, that the cost to maintain that would be higher than Class C.
All right, uh, Mayor's Report. Everybody has the Mayor's Report. There's a little bit of work we have to do on it.
Do you have any further treasures, Senator?
Pardon? I'll get a motion to, uh, accept it first, and then we'll talk about it, we'll open it up. What do you want to do?
No, you should just the other way around.
Okay. So, uh, within the report, there was a report attached to that, where there was a city Frederick putting amendment into the budget. And I'll just give you what they actually, what Frederick put forward. It was, uh, this was the, the board, the, uh, Capital Region Service Commission budget that was put forward, uh, about a month ago. So Frederick put in a, uh, an amendment to that. It says, be resolved that the board of the Capital Region Service Commission directs that the twenty twenty-four budget be amended to hold entity contributions to no more than the twenty twenty-three plus CPI and/or previously contractually agreed upon increases as related to the new mandated services and funds associated with cooperative and regional planning. How that affects, I don't care if you're even touching that or not, or if I'll need to. Okay, because we had, uh, the original, uh, budget on there, it was cost in Hanwell, basically. The, an increase from twenty twenty-three would have been an additional twenty thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars. If it was going up, the revised number, it was going from one thirty-one, six forty-six to one fifty-two, oh, oh, eight. And with the amendment, it goes to, uh, one thirty-six, eight fifty-nine, which is an increase of fifty-two thirteen rather than the twenty thousand three sixty-two, so it's, it's a substantial de- decrease to the increase that we were looking at beforehand. And Mary Kay put a report out on that, on how it was going to affect, uh, their goings-on over the budget year twenty twenty-four. And they were reducing some of the, uh, mandated services by substantial amounts, and they were doing away. They're going to hire a coordinator for the community development group, and that would have been looking after, like, the poverty issues, the low-income housing, that type of thing. So without that position, it's gonna fall on to, uh, Don Just Patrick to look after. So that's the, that's where they cut, they did most of the cutting anyway on the mandated services. So we need to, I need some direction on you guys, what we want to do at the meeting coming up.
So I, I do have a motion planned for that, and I can explain my backup in one sec. So anyway, I move to authorize and direct the mayor of Hanwell to vote for proposed amendment to CRSC twenty twenty-four budget after a board meeting.
Second it?
I'll second.
So just a comment to, to why we support it and not go to court against it. We know that some of the services have to go up anyway because it's of the new mandated services. The numbers that they threw in initially kinda seem like they just pulled out of thin air. These numbers probably are a little bit more realistic. I like the fact that it's a reduction from the original amount um, by the fifteen-ish grand, um, but I realize it does still have to go up a bit anyway. I can't see the budget getting cut much more than that. I guess it'll depend on what, what, what else the board, the board ends up going back to. But I do think it's a reasonable increase considering that the, the numbers were probably a little low-ball last year. Hopefully going forward, if they're keeping it near CPI increases and so forth, then it shouldn't, we shouldn't see these type of jumps hopefully in the future, unless they add more positions again at some point. That's my thoughts, anyway.
Okay, any other comments?
So at the last one, there were obviously issues that it didn't get passed. So what were the main issues from the Capital Region Service Commission?
Uh, the main, the main issues were, was the increase in the budget. It was, uh, especially on the city of Frederick, it was getting a, a much bigger hit than anybody else, of course, thinking of the bigger tax base and the bigger population, so they want to roll it back to the, to the CPI. So that's the amendment that is before the board right now, that we, we'll be voting on in the next upcoming meeting, which is about a week, about a week away.
So was there a feeling that it should go down further, or, like, what?
No, so, we meet, all of us CEOs meet, um, every month to discuss this, so we had quite a lengthy, um, discussion on it. When we had voted for it, we had voted that we were in favor of it. We thought it was what, a seven percent increase. Um, other municipalities felt, when they questioned line by line, um, they didn't feel that they were getting the answers that they needed, so take, for example, um, the tourism. They were saying they had to put in a figure for tourism, but yet City of Frederick was saying, um, like, uh, an increase for staff for tourism. But like, City of Frederick said that their staff for tourism is all under their budget, so they couldn't quite understand, like, what those were, and then they cut one of the positions and stuff. But everybody thought that everything is so tight this year, and people are having such a hard time with rents and food and gas and everything, that everybody should kinda try to keep their budgets within cost of living. And then had just been announced a few days prior to that, that it was gonna be a little at four percent. So that's when City of Frederick made the motion to have it amended.
Okay, but, and community and social development is the one that's taking the run of it?
Yes, there's, there, that's the most of it, because they're losing a, a new position on that, that they were going to be putting out to coordinate the efforts from, like, poverty, low-income housing, all those things that follow under community development.
So staff that is already hired will do those services instead of them having to.
So they will not hire a new person?
A new person.
That's right. That's one of the, that's, the salary was cut from the budget.
Okay.
Council Fox.
So I had voted in favor of the previous budget, and I'm still in favor of the previous budget. I recognize that it's, uh, you know, a seven percent increase, but at the same time, um, the Capital Region Service Commission has been tasked to do a lot of extra work that they've never done before. And I sit on the Community and Social Development Committee. It would be good to have a staff person to be able to get all of this work done. If they expect us to look at homelessness, to look at poverty reduction, these are major issues. You can't just have somebody who's on staff do it off the side of their desk. So this, this concerns me. Um, I don't know how I vote for this because because it's difficult, because what I really want is us to go back and say that we support the, the original seven percent. I don't understand. I recognize that it would be an increase here. I guess my argument would be that there should be a decrease in our provincial taxes, quite frankly, if they're downloading all of this onto the, onto the service commission, and the service commissions have to get their funds from us. So if that's the reality, then I think, you know, I, I would be concerned that what's happening then at the provincial level? And is there a reason why the province isn't kicking into this, considering we have such a huge surplus? So why is our government, our provincial government, not using that surplus to be able to fund this? Because we need this money if we're actually gonna do the work that needs to be done. Otherwise, I can tell you, well, I'll be sitting around a table, twiddling our thumbs and talking about things that we might be able to do, but we have no money to do, and we've been mandated to do it. So I will be voting against the motion.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, so all those in favor of the Council Mackenzie's motion, uh, they signify by saying aye.
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 All those contrary minded?
Aye.
We have a tie.
Looks like we have.
Okay, so who voted?
No, no, no.
So, well, we have three in favor and, uh, three against, uh, it falls on to me to break the tie, and I will be voting along keeping the original budget of the Regional Service Commission in place and not voting for the amendment. So everybody's understanding where, where I will be voting then at the meeting. I will be voting for the original budget, not the city's amendment.
Okay, just as, as a point of information, I think that, that means this motion is defeated. Someone else is gonna have to make a motion, motion to vote as you suggested.
Okay.
Because we don't have motion for action for you to do anything at this point.
Right, so now I need a motion, uh, to direct me to vote in favor of the original motion.
All right, no, you're gonna vote against this one.
Well, there'll be, there'll be two things on the table. One, at the meeting will be, be a vote for the original budget, and then vote for the amendment, amending amendment. That's how it's been told to me. So they'll vote for the budget first, and then they'll vote for the amendment. So the amendment may or may not pass, and if it, if it doesn't pass, then the original budget will go forward.
So I would like to move then, I move that, um, council direct the mayor to vote for the original budget proposal um, for, or s, uh, regions, Capital Region Service Commission.
Okay, uh, second it?
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
I, Council Fox has a valid point. I like, uh, like what he stated in his thing, so I, uh, I will be supporting his motion for this.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded?
Aye.
So for two ayes and four ayes, you want to record those?
Change of mind.
It's an emergency report, you need to receive it.
Yep, okay, so need a motion to receive my report.
Move to receive the mayor's report.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. All right, moving on to the committee reports, age friendly committees on hold, emergency measures report.
Okay, so we met on September 26th. We had talked mostly about Hurricane Lee and we were very busy. We sent out a many alert closures. Um, when we were doing Sentinel, we had 680 people signed up or sent out alerts to 680. And now that we've switched over to the Voyant alerts, we now have 1,850. And I haven't checked that since, since the hurricane. Um, Dan Cleve from NBE MO attended our meeting and went over our emergency plan with us, gave us a couple additional ideas of what we should do and also provided us with a hazard and risk vulnerability assessment. We pretty well have that figured out in our plan, our biggest ones, you know, like fire and all of that. So, um, at the next meeting, we are going to be reviewing this hazard and risk vulnerability form and see if there's any others that we are aware of. So we also discussed Yoho Lake Road, the access and what would happen if we ever had an emergency there. We will be discussing that more and I'll bring that information back to you at a later time. The CIO from Sebree York South has met with the fire chief in New Maryland and was discussing the access road that is at the end of Smith Road that goes over to Charter Settlement. We could possibly see about having that opened up for fire services or something. So, um, we're going to be meeting with our fire chief and the four of us will sit down and figure out what is needed. So I'll update council on that as well. Fire prevention week is, was October the 8th to the 14th. Tomorrow I am in Moncton, bright and early at 8:30 to do a seminar on emergency measures and climate change. And then on the 24th, there is a meeting here that is part of my, that finishes off my leadership, of course, through the University of Moncton. Then on the 24th, councillor Brinlow and I are attending a preparedness cell seminar at the Fredericton Inn. So that is also on climate change and emergency measures. So we will probably have an update on that at our next meeting. So we'll be meeting again on October the 25th at 6:00 PM. And these meetings are open to the public and reported and placed on our website.
Okay, can I get, uh, get a motion to receive the MO report?
I move to receive the emergency measures report as presented.
Second. Any other questions, comments?
I just, I have a question regarding the access road from Smith Road to Charter Settlement because that has been discussed many, many, many times. So is this, would it, is it actually like a reality that they would, are considering this or is this still just another?
I'm not sure. This is, um, like I said, the CIO, um, had brought that up. They, their council really wants to move forward with that. So where it is joining ours, we'll try to all of this work together and create something. So I'll know more once we have additional meetings. They have met with NBE MO, I believe, so we'll all get together and then I'll, I'll bring the information back as I know more.
I'm hoping it is something that they can do. It would make sense to have an emergency access road there. It's been talked about for a long, long.
Better than a decade, really.
Yeah, really.
It's been going on for a while. Like a 24 counts of time.
Yeah.
There used to be an old carriage road there back then and that's what they were talking about.
I used to drive it, you know.
So it would be nice to see, just my comment.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. All right, the environment and stewardship committee on hold, finances will be meeting shortly, governance and policies needs is required.
Uh, just a comment, quick comment about that. So at the last report, we had something, the procedural bylaw was supposed to be coming to council. It didn't yet because we're still waiting on one thing that we need to get clarified first. Once we do have that clarified, then it will eventually be coming to council. So it'll probably soon, just think that, that the staff have been tied up with other things at the moment. So as soon as we get to it though, we'll, we'll get it out to council for you.
Okay, so infrastructure and parks management, we had a, a meeting the other night.
Okay, so you guys probably haven't had time to do this because I probably just wrapped it. So we had a meeting on October the 16th. We discussed the BMX bike park, our storage building and warming hut. Oh, I've got hunt. We'll fix that before it goes over. That's tender will be put out at a later time, probably like the end of November, December. I'd like to have a few more meetings with council to decide what we want to do with that. We discussed a few items in the David Bell Park that is their park in Upper Kings Clear on what would, might be needed. The epoxy floors got finished at the fire station and we thought we might want quotes to do the other fire stations. However, we've decided we're going to wait until this winter to see how it holds up with snow and being slippery and stuff like that. The property should be transferred from Scouts Canada to Hanwell before the end of the year. And we discussed about parking lots and what might be needed. Kitchen upgrades at the Upper Kings Clear Community Hall, those tenders went out to everybody today. And that project is supposed to be finished before mid-December. We discussed the recreation building, which is the church. The contractor, we've still not been able to get in touch with him. So we've got to get staff to go in and just make sure after the hurricanes that everything is okay with that. The Rell Gorman fair, um, there was still a couple of things we needed to finish in there, such as the fencing, a wet spot by play structure, and we need to put additional soil on the property owners' and our plaques and grand opening. So actually JIL, Jethlyn Hand from JIL was in today and we were talking about the fencing. He still has the quote, but he said where it's been a while, he doesn't know if they'll still honor that price or whatever. So he'll contact them to see if they will, but we're going to meet next week just to make sure that we have it going and where we want. So I would like for you to meet with us as well.
Good idea, because we want to get the, before the thing puts up, we want to get the soil to get in there to do away with that wet spot. So that has to happen first.
Yeah. So then we also talked about possible park areas and island views. So we'll watch out for future land acquisition and stuff. So most of it was just kind of getting a plan and if we needed to budget for anything.
I move to receive the infrastructure and parks management report as presented.
Comments, questions?
Just quick comment, uh, everybody see that picture I sent out there, variance field? So maybe I got, I got the only person who heard back from Chris, so I just want to make sure everybody saw it. But yeah, anything I think would be really needed, we had something like that here. Obviously it doesn't have to be 400 feet long, but it'd be nice to have something similar to that. I think it would really be an attraction for the area.
I like it.
Yeah, cool. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. The Mataque Community Liaison Committee, which meets quarterly, we had a former councillor was on that committee. So I don't know if anybody, any councillor wants to sit on it. I can, I can sit on it if need be. I'm not sure if somebody from possibly will wait until the elections finish and get, maybe somebody from, uh, yeah, Ward 5.
Probably we should wait till the election is over because there's, something could come out of that.
Yeah, just exactly. So we'll just, uh, keep it on, on the forefront anyway, so we know we need to refill that position. So the rural plan review. Deputy Mayor Jonah?
Well, we, we have, um, we've had our first meeting on Thursday at 6:30 and it was, we were not doing very well that day, so they fortunately stayed away. Basically, we just sat together, kind of reviewed what our process is going to be and discussed, you know, the sort of the, the newer ideas in, in donating and planning with Tina, our person from, person from the Capital Region Service Commission. I still can't remember that, Capital Region Service Commission. Yeah, it's still RCLB. Anyway, um, so we were, you know, we've, we've sort of set out a timeline. We're thinking it's probably going to take us about, about a year. We're going to meet once a month, review the, the two plans we have now, figure out how to combine them together and that sort of thing. And we'll plan on having several houses during the information sessions or during the period of time. And anyway, so we're going to have another, hopefully next month or so, well, next month we'll have our second meeting, which will sort of get us a little more organized as to go through the residential areas first, commercial, what exactly we're going to do. Anyway, we're off to a good start.
Okay, can I get a motion please?
Um.
Motion to, uh.
Receive the rural plan review committee report as presented?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Any questions for deputy mayor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 15, the CIO treasures report.
Okay, so you have my report. We have put out, put a few tenders in the last couple of days. Our garbage and recycling will go out for the end of October and just waiting for numbers that end streets and the Upper Kings Clear and Island View. So that I can put them in the new tender. The kitchen upgrade, the parking lot expansion at the Upper Kings Clear Fire Station, our storage building and warming hut that will be before the end of the year. The transportation feasibility study, I'm hoping that will go out before the end of the month. I'm going to need help with the regional service, Capital Regional Service Commission to assist me with that one. And our snow removal contracts for this facility and our three fire stations went out. The Hamel Park MOU, Hamel Park Academy MOU, um, the recreation director and I are just finalizing everything with that. We had sent it back, we just wanted a little bit of clarification on some of the items that they wanted. And then where my report goes on our website, I have put about councillor Brinlow being our newest councillor for Ward 5. And then I put everybody's information on here with their websites and email addresses and stuff so that everybody will have it. We also put a separate post on social media as well with everybody's contact information. So revenue collected, commutation tax levy, we received $12,647.30. Our community capital building fund, which was our prior gas tax, that was transferred from our general operating account into the gas tax account. That came in at $176,660.50. We received our payment from Kings Clear First Nations, our Upper Kings Clear Fire Department does the fire services over at the First Nations. So they pay us $21,000 every year for that. And we received $3,000 for the Upper Kings Clear Fire Department's 60th anniversary from the Regional Development Corporation. So as Chief Cross said, our truck, fire trucks are all going through inspection. Our ladder truck passed. Some of the other trucks are currently having repairs done, but no motion is required because these are budgeted items. He talked about the 2002 pumper. So the budget process, I have put the dates of when I would like to have our meetings. Very difficult this year. Our budget is due on November the 15th. However, if there happens to be a tight election, we have to wait 10 days for them to do a recount if possible. So possibly the earliest I can get our councillors sworn in would be, I believe it's the 7th, that Monday. That does not leave very long for me to train councillors on what the budget is and have budget meetings. So to all of our candidates, our budget meetings are open to the public. So I would encourage you to possibly attend our meetings at this time so that you are aware of what's happening in your budget. So I'm going to try to do budget, like finance meetings up until that time and then we will have a whole bunch of budget meetings once you're claimed, or sorry, once you're elected. So Thursday, October the 26th, we will do a finance meeting. So I'll give you all of the, what we have spent and stuff up to the end of September. And then Monday, October the 30th, at 7:00 PM will be a budget meeting. This is going to be very high, high level, just kind of seeing anything that you guys might want to do. Then Tuesday, November the 7th, we will have a budget meeting. Thursday, November the 9th, I'd like to review our five-year capital plan. Then Tuesday, November 14th, we will do the final review of budget and then hopefully November the 15th, I can submit it. But if something happens and we're a couple of days late, then they'll have to come after me.
It's never, it's never been an issue with that, but most people don't have them done.
There's, uh, yeah, I've heard last year there was quite a few that didn't have them done even come January.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Or whatever. So I think even if we, because of the elections, um, I think if we were even, you know, a week late, they're not going to be upset with us. So that is my report.
Okay, can I get a motion to receive the CIO treasures report?
I move to receive the CIO treasures report as presented.
Second.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? Councillor Fox?
So I just would like to take the opportunity to thank all of the folks who have put their name forward to run in the election. I think it's fabulous that we have this many people and that there's, that the, that the voters have a, have a choice, have the opportunity. And I, I just think it's great that, that people are coming forward and putting their name forward and I just want to thank them for doing that. It's great.
Nice.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Councillor Fox?
Um, I agree with councillor Fox, but my question is more on the schedule that you have down. So you said November 6th is going to be the inauguration and special meeting? Or no? That's what. That's what I had from.
Yeah, this was more or less just, oh, did I say budget?
No, you're all right.
No, no.
November sixth isn't on here, that's.
Yeah.
Because I have two that you had sent from before. One was October twenty-fourth, and then we also had November sixth.
So November sixth I had, we have meetings, but these were just budget or finance ones.
So October twenty-fourth and it was, it's not on here. It was just a schedule that.
What did I say it was?
You have October twenty-fourth as inauguration and special meeting?
Yes, so that's not a budget meeting.
And November sixth you have it too. That's my.
Oh, because I was probably, it's all according if I'm able to swear them in on October twenty-sixth, right? Because if it's a, if I have to wait ten days.
So we have two, okay. So we have two just in case.
Just in case. And I still need, on the twenty-sixth, I still need to have a special meeting because we're going to have to award these tenders.
The contacts, okay.
So I might not be able to have the inauguration.
But we still have this, okay.
Yeah.
Twenty-six, twenty-four or twenty-six?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Okay, any other questions?
Sorry.
Okay, all those in favor of receiving the treasures report signify by saying aye. All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Item sixteen, old rock in his business. There's no update from the other night on the little recreation building. We talked about that tonight and also the rural plant, plant progress report was given tonight. Under new business, we have, need a motion for committee resignation of councillor Highslip.
I move to accept councillor Holly Highslip's resignation effective August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three as the chair of the age-friendly committee and as vice chair of the environmental stewardship committee.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Item B is the B M I solid waste collection contract extension by one month on the motion.
I move to authorize and direct the CIO to extend the contract of Baruster Marine Incorporated B M I for one additional month at the same rate ending January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So the new contract for the entire area of Handwell can commence on February first, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Item C was, by councillor Chris Prigola was claimed. Item D is replacement of the ski doo for trail grooming. So who's going to look into that? Anybody in particular?
I can take a look. I have a little bit of time on my hands coming up.
You'll be looking for something to do.
Actually, thought about it today, but I never, I think I'll sleep first.
Can I ask a quick question on that? So we're talking about replacing the ski. Are we also talking about replacing the groomer?
That didn't come up. It works fine, to my knowledge.
Okay, so last year, the grant from R D C is to, is, can be for replacing the sled as well as groomer. And they cover forty percent of the cost. So Jared had initiated some grant application on that, but he needed financials in order for it to move forward. So now Taylor is looking into it through R D C. So I'm just wondering at the same time if we should be getting quotes for both in case we do? Because if we do need to replace the groomer, my understanding before was that the groomer itself was, well, it's a handmade.
Yeah, it's one Jerry.
Nessman.
Nessman handmade.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not very heavy duty. It's pretty lightweight and the cylinder has broken a couple of times. So I think if we could look into getting an actual commercial groomer that would do a better job of grooming the trails, it'd be worthwhile looking into.
So they might be able to be covered. I do not think this could do. I think that's what Taylor is been discussing with Regional Development Corporation. And right now they're, they can't, he can't get a whole development money because I'm assuming because of the election or possible election.
Sorry, I contacted Taylor today only because I wanted to know who his contact was. And I also contacted my contact from City Rec and he had a different contact. So I gave him the new contact person and he was going to contact her to see, maybe that would help. But I think both would have been considered, the sled and the groomer. So it might be just worth checking out, is all I'm saying.
I'd check out to see if the diagram available for sure. And I, if you're looking passing the snowmobile, at the same time, you could look into groomer to see what one would cost.
Yeah, how, how wide is that one there that we got now?
I think it's probably four feet. Yeah, and it's, it's very light duty. I mean, it, it kind of does the job, but not very good.
Should we be looking at six feet? What's the widest to get across the bridge?
That's just, that's what I'm wondering.
Six feet is tight.
Six feet would be tight.
Too big.
I don't think you want to go along the bridge because then you have the, maybe if it's too groomed, then people are going to go off the edge. You know what I mean?
Yeah, but we're talking about the wide bridge too, that's, that's got a railing on it. It has to fit through that bridge.
So we're talking a flat groomer or nothing for skis or just a flat groomer?
Just a drag, a drag behind the snowmobile, yeah. Okay, any other comments on the snowmobile groomer?
My curiosity, is that where the trails are at back, of course? So if you get a heavier duty one, is there any risk of damaging the accessibility trail?
No, we wouldn't run that over until there was enough snow, snow path down it. So it wouldn't do any damage because we ran rubber last year. We didn't do any damage with it, so, but you got to wait.
I'm just thinking if it was heavier duty, but no concern.
And if you want, if, if you were concerned, you could leave the grooming section up. You know, and don't go down so as tight on the rubberized surface. So there's certainly a work around it. Okay, upcoming activities, Spook Fest, Remembrance Day Ceremony, Christmas Craft Show and Christmas Open House. So Spook Fest is coming up this weekend, actually. November eleventh, there's Remembrance Day Ceremony and November twenty-fifth, Christmas Craft Show. And the November twenty-sixth, Christmas Open House. So we've got some pretty good upcoming activities to look into.
So anybody out there that wants to volunteer for this weekend, we desperately need volunteers, so.
Don't all speak at once.
Not very much.
What time is the tree lighting in Open House?
It's normally at six, isn't it normally at six thirty?
Six thirty, I think we have.
I think? Is it six thirty?
Six or six thirty?
I think the tree lighting is at six and then everybody comes in immediately after six for like the open house. Pretty sure it's at six, yeah.
We'll just make it six and six thirty?
It's six.
So six.
Santa Claus comes to Station One on. Usually you'd like to, week leading up to Christmas. I know this is.
So I just realized, the open house and tree lighting is November twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Because all of us at U M M B.
Including us. Well.
This is Sunday, though.
It's Sunday nights.
Oh, it's Sunday night. The, the Christmas tree lighting is Sunday night.
Yeah, it's really only the board.
Oh, okay, so it's only there.
It's usually fine.
Yeah. It'll be, it'll be hectic, but all hands on deck, but.
Well, board meeting, everyone goes to the board meeting on Sunday morning, but usually not by next month.
I was thinking that, no, I was thinking this was Saturday and.
Not Sunday.
Okay. So I want to thank you folks for showing up at tonight's meeting. I hope you found it very informative. It's really nice to see you guys show up. We certainly appreciate it. And we look forward to possibly seeing you guys in the future. So right now, we're going to move into closed session and that's a closed session just for council. So we usually, it's usually closed to public. So I'll get you guys to move on.
Motion to go into closed session?
I'll second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried, we are now in closed session. Okay, need a motion to commit to closed session?
Motion to commit to closed session and go back to open session?
Second or? Questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. We are now in open session.
I have a motion. Forward, I would like to motion to authorize the direct staff to communicate to the following to the Capital Regional Service Commission. It is recommended that the planning, review and adjustment committee of the Capital Regional Service Commission allow the use of the unbuild repair establishment on bid number seven-five-five-three-two-four-seven-three in the commercial C zone of the road community panel road plan, subject to the following terms and conditions. One, that the terms and conditions as included with schedule C continue to be in effect. Two, that the automobile repair establishment adhere, adhere to any applicable government acts and regulations. Three, that there be no onsite disposal of hazardous materials. Four, that no derelict vehicles, as in non-operating, non-roadworthy, unlicensed or uninspected, be stored on the property. Five, that no more than ten vehicles, not including business and employee vehicles, being located on the property at any one time, except during tire change seasons where there may be many vehicles dropped and picked up as the tires are changed, which is between A, October fifteenth and December fifteenth, and B, April first to May thirty-first. And six, and no vehicles stored onsite for more than one month. And finally, number seven, that no visible automotive parts are stored outside of the building, including tires.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, moving on, the date, time, location of next meeting. Council chambers, November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three at seven P M. Do I have a motion to adjourn, please? Making adjourn, ah, what, eight forty-seven? Over there about.